All right, welcome, everybody. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda, so I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as posted and set to the used news media 24 hours prior.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Mr. Lamos, second by Mr. Hodge, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item, we've added a, what we call the city leader, city leadership statement, something that we talked about here a while back, so we're going to just get her started. This says, "The City of Hanson endeavors at all times to promote and model the principles of professionalism, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting this evening's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles." We will incorporate probably on a weekly basis, just a little reminder. So, next item is the Council Workshop that is available online, so I won't read it to you, I would be here for a while, but if you want to go out and take a look, it is out there for you. The next item there is public comment, and we had one registered in advance, I don't see them here. I would open this up to any other public comments at this point. Hearing none, we'll move on. Public hearings, we don't have any, old business, we don't have that. So, we'll move on to our new business. First item is the City Council 2025 Appointments, and this would include the official newspaper as the Hampton Chronicle, and North Iowa landfill, Phil Borb representative for 2024, Russell Morgan. Mr. Dunn, did you have any?
I don't have anything to add. I don't have anything to add to that unless anybody has any questions.
So, basically, it's just a reappointment of the people that we have available, the paper, and Mr. Morgan, so.
How often does that landfill board meet?
How often do they meet? I don't know, is it monthly? Doug, do you know, monthly or quarterly?
I think it's quarterly, I think, for Doug.
Yeah, not sure.
So, would Russ be entitled to mileage for something like that?
Through, I think the board takes care of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so with that, I'd entertain a motion to approve City Council 2025 Appointments.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Blanford. Second by, was that Mr. Palmer, Ms. Greifey? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have several City Council appointments to boards and commissions. This would be for reappoint Robin Moss as to a five-year term on the Board of Adjustment, expiring 12/31/2029. Reappoint Carole Philpott to a one-five-year term on Planning and Zoning Commission, expiring on 12/31/2029. Reappoint Mr. Davies to a three-year term on the Hampton Historic Preservation Committee Commission, expiring 12/31/2027. Reappoint Ella Butler to a three-year term on the Hampton Historic Preservation Commission, expiring 12/31/2027. Reappoint Randy Sanders to a five-year term on the Hampton Tree Board, expiring 12/31/2029. And reappoint Craig Semler with a five-year term on the Hampton Tree Board, expiring on 12/31/2029, sorry.
Nothing more.
Nothing more than that, so, any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, Ron, can the council members get a list of all those committee members?
Yes.
Or is that on the website?
It's on the website.
Okay.
But we can.
Well, I'll just look it up on the website.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve City Council Appointments to Boards and Commissions.
So moved.
Second. You guys are fighting it over. Okay, we got Ms. Greifey with the motion, second by Mr. Palmer, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next, we have the, consider the Airport Hangar Lease Agreement Amendment, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. Proposing to change a couple of things. One is the hangar lease amount of rent per month, going from $65 to $80 in a T-hanger, and then from $75 to $100 in the larger yellow hanger. And then also, on page two, under number seven, adding the last sentence, "That the leasees shall not store personal equipment items such as mowers, snow blowers, vehicles, motorcycles, other personal household-related items that are not directly related to their aircraft operation or maintenance." Changed a little bit of the termination clauses, number 10 and 11, and on number 15, added in an address line, an email address line, and a cell phone number line. Any questions?
Hearing none, we'd entertain a motion to approve the Airport Hangar Lease Agreement Amendment.
I move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Davies.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Blanford, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next item up here, we're going to direct the City Manager to proceed with plan for structurally securing 1, 4, and 6 First Street Northwest. Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet is the one-page summary of the two options that were put together by ISG with cost estimates associated with each option. Option A is to repair the structural integrity of both Building 4 and Building 6 with an estimated cost of $498,000 total. Option B is full demolition of both buildings, and then filling in the ground, and they would be vacant lots. That is a cost estimate of $615,000. At the workshop, the council discussed this, and the consensus at the workshop was to go with, move forward with option A to structurally repair the structural integrity to secure the buildings, and start working with our attorney and ISG and public financial management to go down that road. So, I just thought it best we have some council action to put that on the record. Anybody want to discuss, have questions?
Any further questions, discussion?
Well, I was just going to mention different people I've talked to, including those like on the Design Committee of the Chamber, they feel that we should repair it. I haven't talked to anyone that thought we should demo it.
And I would have to agree with that. I mean, it's slightly reasonable more cheaper than to repair it, but we don't want another vacant lot in our main dream, so I think it's a good idea as well. So, any further discussion? Lamos.
Sad thing is, the city's gotten into the real estate business with all these demolition of properties and condemned properties and everything. Thank you.
Agreed on that one.
But what is the other option?
Right.
I mean, Fort Hamstrung, us on the church over here, and that's just what they do. If they're not going to do it, then we're going to do it.
Yeah. Unfortunately, it falls, something does fall on us, and we either want to keep our city cleaned up or not, so that's kind of where we are, especially with, this is just a big project, so. Any other questions? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to direct City Manager to proceed with ISG option A to structurally stabilize and secure 4 and 6 First Street Northwest.
So moved. I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Hodge, second by Ms. Greifey, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next, I would entertain a motion to approve the claims as submitted by staff in the amount
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Mr. Lamos, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next, we have Resolution 2024-31. This is approving amendment to 2020-25 employment reject agreement between the City of Hampton and Doug Tar. And Mr. Dunn.
Yes, so this resolution does two things. It amends the current employment agreement by updating the termination date of the employment agreement, and then approves another, a newer revised employment agreement between the City of Hampton and Doug Tar. Whereas the City of Hampton has negotiated certain terms and conditions of a renewed employment agreement with Doug Tar, and whereas it is in the best interest of the city that said employment agreement should be approved by the Council of the City of Hampton, Iowa, now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Council of the City of Hampton, Iowa, that there is attached hereto an employment agreement, including base salary details and other terms of employment, which is hereby approved and ratified by the City Council. The city hereby also amends Doug Tar's current employment agreement dated July 1, 2020, by amending the term ending date of June 30, 2025 to December 31, 2024, and reappoints Doug Tar as Public Works Director and Code Enforcement Officer effective January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2029. The mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute said employment agreement on behalf of the City of Hampton. This employment agreement shall be in full force and effect from and after its execution by all parties. And then the appointment agreement is attached, and number three is the term, again, as I said, from January 1 of 2025 to continue through December 31, 2029. And then the annual base salary as of January 1, 2025 is $87,000, and then a 3% increase for the remainder of the contract annually. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2024-31. So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Blanford, second by Mr. Davies. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Greifey?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Blanford?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Lamos?
Nay.
And Mr. Davies?
Aye.
Thank you, resolution is adopted. Moving on to the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda includes the items, previous minutes as drafted from the Monday, November 25, 2024, regular session. Schedule the next regular session as for Monday, December 23, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the Chamber's Council, and approve alcohol licensing for Projecto X, our LSLC, 1122 Avenue Northwest Hampton, and Rustic Brew, 117 First Street Northwest Hampton, Iowa, and approve a home ownership update to alcohol licensing for Projecto X LLC, 11122 Avenue Northwest. They need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Palmer.
Second it.
Second by Ms. Greifey.
Who's the new owner, then, at Projecto XO?
Good question.
Who was the old owner?
Alicia Kenseko? They're still co-owners.
Name change.
Yeah, and there's a percentage on, ownership is set at 90% Fabian and 10% Alicia.
All right.
So, does that constitute a building inspection or anything?
No, they do the liquor license inspection on the first one. I went through the building, and then any subsequent renewals, we just go through it. I was just recently in the building with ABD, about three months ago.
And the police chief inspected it also?
I was with him, yeah. They give you a checkoff list, and then the fire chief, he also.
I mean, yeah, excuse me. Thank you.
Are we still having issues with bottles and stuff coming out at night?
I have not had any complaints about that.
Good, all right.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bring this to our staff reports. Don't sit down yet, that's Chief Morrison.
I got out of the way for a minute, and then I came back. Don't have a whole lot for tonight, as far as nuisance goes. We went through most of that on Monday. Doug and I did a bunch of rounds on Monday, spoke with a lot of property owners that day. We are working on our applications, we've got quite a few in, so we're moving forward with that process on employment and trying to find a new officer, and so we're going to have physical testing on, and written test in January sometime. So, we're just trying to set up a date, trying to get around the holidays and the busy time, and then get somebody in here as soon as we can. And then we're also working with Exxon to get our new camera equipment installed sometime in the next few months, and that's with the Barkman grant money. And that's all I have unless there's questions.
Mr. Lamos.
Other than you, who else would sit in on the interviews?
Me and Captain Hallsney do.
Do they have to do some sort of a physical test?
They do physical testing. I think we'll work with the Wellness Center again this year because we're in the cold season, probably snow on the ground, and then they do written testing, the Iowa Post Test, and then psychological testing, and then interview.
I got another question. If someone is arrested and they have to post bond, is it usually 10% or 1% or how is that?
That's completely up to the magistrate. A lot of times, they'll do 10%, sometimes they'll do the full amount. It's a structured bond amount, depending on the crime, they're pretty well set, but the judge can kind of fluctuate on those amounts. But typically, they can ROR them, release on recognizance, they can do 10% bond, or they can hold them on the full bond.
Thank you.
They have some leeway there.
Any other questions for Chief Morrison? Not hearing any. Thank you, sir. Mr. Tar.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, the asbestos abatement has been being conducted this week at 256th Street Southwest, so if you see some work going on over there, they're removing all the asbestos from that property in preparation for demolition. The stump grinding project's well underway, Arbor Monkey's been in town this week working on that, I believe they have two of them going. Wastewater mapping project's nearly complete, I know they were out working today to uncover some of the last remaining sewer manholes so we can get some elevation shots and things of that nature to enter into the new maps. The city staff's been working on some tree removals, and they've also been working on, we had some grader repairs done, we had to get a couple leaking cylinders repaired for that, and so we were able to get the cylinders repaired and refurbished locally, and then we were able to get those installed this week. And then we had a cleanup project at the snow dump site, I think that's been completed this week, and then we had, some of the parks cemetery staff have been working and then doing some identification stuff with leveling of stones out in the cemetery, so some of that work's getting complete as well. Some of these bitter cold days, I know they've been in the shop a little bit too, doing some maintenance around, so, any questions or concerns?
Mr. Palmer?
Yes. I think the lights on the welcome sign in the south and the north need to be.
Adjusted?
Yeah, I think the one in the north must have come down a little bit.
Okay.
But then again, it was so bright at one time, we had neighbors complaining about it, so I don't know where we're at. It looks like it's down now, but, and then on the south part of town, it's lit, but it's off, it's just off a little bit.
We'll take a look at that, thank you.
Mr. Lamos.
This is a question about the water. I get a whiff of chlorine once in a while, if I drink straight out of the faucet, but if I drink out of the refrigerator where there's a filter, I don't have the chlorine smell sensation or whatever.
Correct.
What's causing that?
Probably because we add chlorine as disinfectant.
Is it overchlorinated or?
No, no, if you smell it, it actually is probably more on the lines of actually under chlorination, just the opposite of what you'd think, actually. But there's also a definitive line, we test every day for, out in the system, we have to test for it, to make sure we're, I believe, at a 1 point to 1.2. So, for the most part, the guys have to do that, we report it, log it, send that to the DNR all the time. Sometimes I think if you get a, you know, if you haven't used that faucet for a long time, or is it, I don't know the particulars, but we can talk about it.
Oh, it's used all the time.
Okay. I'll let staff know that you're having that, maybe send them down there and test it and see where you're at in your levels, that wouldn't be a problem.
How often do you test for fluoride?
I believe that's a daily test as well.
Okay. Do you know if all the lift station controls have been moved up above ground?
I don't think all of them have, but most of them have.
Okay, how many lift stations is there?
We eliminated two, so I believe we are.
Five.
Yeah, I think we're at five.
I think so.
And then, of course, we have some out at the new facility as well, there's a bank of six out there.
Will there be any lift stations if the sewer line from Bees Lake comes into town?
No.
All gravity?
Yep.
One more question, have you let bids for the cemetery trees yet?
Yep, but they've been out, so.
How many trees is there?
So, there's 60 total, but we've decided to cut the project back, given the numbers, so we're going to do 28 to 30 this year, that's what we put out for bid, and then we'll do the remaining the following year. We're not sure where those will come in at as well, so we're going to try to, this first group is going to be all of those that are in the flats and along that south driveway and leading up into the cemetery, and then the remaining will be actually up in the cemetery.
Thank you.
I have a question. Was there money left to the cemetery to put towards tree removal?
Yes, that's what we'll be using.
Will that cover all of it?
Yes.
So, is there any reason, so if it's not money, so why are you doing only half?
We don't, we don't know what it's going to cost yet, Jim.
Or do you put, like, a request out, just sort of keep it manageable as far as for quoting it, because I can't see if you were going to do all 60 at once, who could necessarily handle that and get it done?
That's a big part of it, for whoever gets the job to manage it and to get done by the spring so that it can be done and not drag out, and, yeah.
We're hoping there's enough to cover all of it, but we won't know until we get the bids back.
Okay, and then one other question, the house that was going to be demoed, is that the one like sort of by Hardee's or it's over?
This is at 256th Street.
Is it a green, was it a greenhouse?
Yes, behind the car wash.
And would there have been an option for a controlled burn, or is there certain parameters that you would?
No.
I'm just curious.
That's our game plan, is to do a controlled burn and having the fire department do that, and then to have city staff utilize our tractor backhoe to core it out.
Okay, somebody asked me if what it was going to do.
Right, I think we're going to try to do that core out in-house.
Do you know approximately when that might be done?
The last I talked to the fire chief, I advised him that soon as the abatement's done here, which we figured was the middle of December, I said anytime after that, it'd be nice to get that done, you know, around the first of the year or so, if possible.
Okay, thank you, I'll let that person know.
Thank you.
Mr. Hodge?
You know, speaking of the fluoride issue, there's quite an issue with this fluoride again. Mr. Kennedy, if he gets his position that Trump appoints him, he's going to eliminate the fluoride, and I think they have cut it back. Jerry and I ran off at the end of the spectrum that time with that fluoride issue here in town, I remember it very well, I remember the vote. Of course, my oldest daughter, the dental hygienist, with enough education, she can give the Novocain shots, she'll be up here Saturday, I'm going to try to remember to ask her what she thinks about that, just out of curiosity, but.
At my last conference this fall, Jim, or, excuse me, Bill, there was a, some information given out that the EPA and the DNR put out to us that has found that, basically, the findings of that study are communities that add fluoride have a lower IQ than communities that don't add it. So, there are some new studies that are kind of proving some things that Europe knew about a long time ago.
Wonder why I'm so smart, then?
I don't know, experience.
So, would that, how would that work for towns that have natural fluoride?
Right, some communities would probably filter it out, or if they had a natural that, you know, from my understanding, the natural fluoride isn't as bad for you as the man-made chemical that is being put in the water.
I think Sheffield has an overabundance of fluoride naturally.
Right, some communities do, and our well three had naturally occurring fluoride that brought our average up a long time ago when we had a combined system. But because of that, we actually add more to what we have, but it's monitored and tested.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Tar? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Tar.
Thank you.
Mr. Dunn?
Just a reminder that the next meeting is on December 23, will be a regular session instead of a workshop because of the holiday, Christmas, and budget workshop reminders on the Mondays in January, and then the budget calendar will be coming out soon. Any questions? Thank you.
Not seeing any, thank you, sir. Council reports, let's start with Mr. Hodge.
A couple of months ago, I approached one of our volunteer fire department members who had retired from his, what was his normal daytime job, and I had seen him down to the fire station, so I approached him about if he would, if I had a couple nine-year-old friends that wanted to look at the fire trucks and the fire station, if he would willingly go down there and show them that. there and show them that. And so I happened to approach him last Saturday and he was more than willing. He met me and my little buddies down there at 1 o'clock and it's been quite a while since I've been in that fire station and boy, they have remodeled the meeting room and it really looks great, I thought. And so anyway, we got to look at the fire trucks. You know, those things are pretty sophisticated anymore. A lot of the stuff I didn't understand. One thing that changed, the thing they take out to cut open the cars in an accident is no longer gas, it's battery operated. I didn't know that. These tires anymore on these fire trucks are just huge because of all the water, the weight that they handle and everything. And of course, the boys got to get up ahead of them and that was the big deal. That's really what they was interested in is getting up in them, fire trucks and, and for that I want to say Rory Pender, thank you. I appreciate that. And we have a great volunteer fire department. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Greifey?
We made it through the busiest week end of the year for retail businesses downtown. Thank God. Thanksgiving weekend it was. Friday on court was a great success, especially with our surprise bartender, special guest celebrity. First and second vintage won People's Choice Award for appetizers. I worked my butt off on them. We sold about 200 tickets. There were not 200 people on the walk, but it was freezing cold that night too. The next day, Saturday, was Shop Small Saturday and we had pop-up market and then in the afternoon we had Light Up The Night that's put on by REC and I thank REC for that phenomenal event. We had 130 kids in the ceramic studio painting ceramic ornaments. If you ever want to visit a madhouse, that's it. I attended the Chamber Quarterly Coffee this past Friday. It was out at the fairgrounds. Public is always invited to the quarterly coffees. Don't forget that. We had a really good breakfast.
Well, you'll have to send me an email.
No. It's an invitation.
Get an address, Bill.
Candy King Blizzard was also this past Friday. Tuesday evening, the Chamber Promotion Committee met. We're working on the annual appreciation dinner and then the, the Chamber had its budget meeting for 2025. And tonight I attended the $10,000 raffle. Sad news, I did not win. And even sadder news, Jim sold more tickets than me.
Oh.
Yeah.
And on last note, Carol Lee invites everybody to drive past Memorial Park. Their family decorated it and lit it up and they would love you to see it. This is the first time they've done it.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Palmer?
All right. Just, I won't be at Monday's meeting on the 23rd. Our family's getting together, so this will be the last time I'll be, be here. So wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I just want to go into 2025 and we're going to have some challenges as there's no doubt about it. I think between some local stuff and what the state's going to be doing, I just want everybody to keep rooting for the home team. I mean, nobody, nobody gets on a plane and roots against the pilot and we need to root for our home team and, and really help each other out this next year because I think it's going to be tough, especially with some finances with the city. So anyway, again, everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and we'll see you next year.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Lamos?
I'd just like to let every know, everyone know that Bill's birthday's coming up and I want to know where the party is.
Where the what is?
Where's the party?
Right here.
You know, I got all three daughters from hell coming, so God only knows what's going to happen.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Blanford?
Well, supporting the local businesses kind of helps this time of year, so if you can't decide what to get anybody for Christmas, you can always get them that gift certificate for those small businesses downtown to help them. So be sure to do that if you can't find those hard to buy for people.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Davies?
Since there's no Chamber Director, I've been helping out a little bit with the Chamber and I've requested a design, the Main Street Design Architect to come up to visit Chad Harrison CPA. They're working on upper floor apartment and then also working with Russ Gibson on three of his properties, again, to have the design architect come up and start working with them and hopefully down the road, they can maybe apply for some major grants to work on those properties and we can get some more, I guess, apartments in, in the downtown area. Did attend the library's open house their Christmas. They always have some really good goodies there. Just a reminder, the Franklin County Community Foundation, I believe their grant deadline is January 15th for those organizations, including the city, that want to apply for grants. And then finally, at the Windsor, the play A Colorless Christmas written by Sheffield native, well, I guess Hampton native Nathan Prowley is this weekend at the Windsor, is on Saturday at 1 and 7:00 PM and Sunday at 1:00 PM. And then following it, we're bringing in some different movies. White Christmas, the 70th anniversary is Sunday and Monday. The Star is on Wednesday night. That's more inviting churches in the local area and that's a free movie. And then Silent Night in Algonah, which is about the POWs. We had shown that two years ago. We're bringing that back on next Thursday. So we got lots of like nice, I think, fun, good movies coming up and activities at the Windsor. So if you're looking for something to do, come by the Windsor and have some more good popcorn. There you go. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving for my report, I don't have a lot tonight. I do want to remember that budget time coming up next month, so everybody put your, put your heads, heads together and as, as, as Mr. Palmer said, let's root for the home team and do the best, best job that we can. I wanted to, I was talking to Doug the other day and he mentioned that he partners with the county for some parts for like our sanders and some of our trucks and stuff and, you know, I just want to say I really appreciate that because that really helps when it comes to budget time. You know, it helps cut some costs. We get the things done. We get, get in usable shape and, and I love, I love everybody working together for, for the cause, so keep that up. Next, the 21st Saturday, I will be ringing the bell at Haraway from 3:00 to 5:00, so bring your change, dollars, I know they're all expected, they're all, all expected. We'll, we'll hope to see you there. And last thing, stay, stay warned, drive safe. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the regular succession of the city council meeting.
So moved.
I got a motion by Mr. Hodge, second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.